To new business, new business item number one and the reason why we're all here tonight. Consider applicants for the city council. And I believe that that is my presentation item. So we're gonna go through this really quickly here. All right, so. Vice President Rich Milton resigned from the Gardner City Council effective January 19th. And following the guidelines set forth by Charter ordinance number 27, the governing body rules procedure. The governing body began the appointment process for a new council member. The process includes a vacancy advertised in print and social media. Our application deadline was February 1st in the evening. Verification of qualified elector status, which means they just have to meet these qualifications for being on the city council, which is to be a, a, uh, an elector who lives within the Gardner city limits and at least 18 years old. And not been convicted of felony. Applications that were received by the governing body. We're gonna have the public interviews this evening. And then at the end of those interviews, if there's a consensus, the governing body will vote to appoint an applicant. There is a presentation, I believe, that's teed up for this, just to kinda go through what our interview process was so far. All right, so what we try to do with this process, this is as laid out in the governing body rules procedure, is that we release to the public all the names of the applicants. We make sure that the interview questions are consistent and that they're applied equally to all the candidates. And then also, we are giving them the same time limit to respond. And there are, there is room for follow-up, but we try to limit each interview to under 10 minutes if possible. So with that being said, we will go on ahead and move on to our application process. As we said, the applicant will provide a two-minute opening statement. The governing body will ask each applicant a standard set of questions. I believe that's on the next slide, I'm sorry. Okay, so we already did that. There we go. They will be given two minutes to respond to those questions. We might have one or two follow-up questions depending on additional follow-ups that the governing body might want to ask. And then a one-minute closing statement for each applicant. And again, we'll be going through the timing process over here on the left-hand side, your left, my right, as we use for the public comment segments. Next slide, please. So here are the three council interview questions we'll be asking each applicant. What are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years? What steps are needed to be taken to address them? We'll identify three priorities of the city in their words and their understanding. And where do you see the city in five to 10 years, which kinda speaks to the vision that you have for our community? I believe that we will be doing a ranking of the candidates. Since we have six, we wanna make sure that we have everybody get an opportunity to speak. And then we will have an application ranking or applicant ranking. If at any time there is a consensus amongst the members of the council, a majority meeting, okay, for a specific candidate, that basically ends the process. That individual will then be submitted for a vote of the body. And that individual would then be selected to serve. Yes.
The majority of the governing body.
Yes, majority of the governing body, yes, that's correct. And then, let me see here, the results will be announced. Actually, the city attorney verifies the results. He's the impartial third party. Provide the results to myself. And in order to keep people from getting potentially negatively affected, we're going to only, after the first round, if there's no, uh, majority on a single candidate, we will just announce the top three. And those top three would then go to a second round of interviews. Or a second round of voting, I mean. All right? That'll go through another set of interviews. Well, now the results, and if a majority of governing body members select the same top candidate, consensus is reached, motion can be made at that time to appoint.
Mayor?
Yes.
Nick Sirfire, are we only ranking our, our, our one and only candidate, or are we ranking one through six?
No, the first round is one through six, the second one is, is top choice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? All right? But if there's a top choice, and the ma- and the majority of the governing body has that person as a top choice, they will automatically just stop the process at that point, because that's considered consensus. Okay? All right, so we will start, we have a order. We'll start with an alphabetical order. And the first individual to come forward will be Stacy Cooper.
Good evening.
Good evening, and if you wouldn't mind, just in your opening statement, just let, you know, speak your name and address, so we have that for the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Stacy Cooper, 123 East West Huff Place, Gardner, Kansas. I am an attorney. I'm still working as a full-time attorney with the federal government. And I saw the opening, and so I wanted an opportunity to, I feel like as a citizen, we should all participate in our government. And so that's why I put in my application. I've been in Gardner for a few years now. I moved back here to take care of my mother, who has, was scammed by someone who purported to be a licensed bonded contractor. So that lends me here. And I just wanted to put, I just wanted to put my name in the, in the hat. And if this opportunity doesn't work out for me, then I'm sure there will be others. I know there are opportunities on boards and commissions. But I, as far as the three biggest issues facing the city.
We'll, we'll ask those questions.
Oh, okay.
Your opening statements, you can just.
I can ramble.
Talk about yourself. Yes, exactly.
Talk about myself, okay. So I have experience working for two city attorneys in my career, which did not involve me or engage me that much in the city council activities, but I did do research and that kind of thing on behalf of the city. And I have worked in both corporate and private practice, and I have worked for government. I have also worked as a federal administrative law, state, I'm sorry, state administrative law judge for the state of Illinois. So I have a wide range of experience that taps into all kinds of planning and project management. I even worked for a company that put a phone system in Russia, so. With that, I'll let you go ahead and ask questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your biographical information. You sound like you've got a pretty deep, pretty deep experience pool. So what are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years, and what steps need to be taken to address them?
Is, the first biggest issue, in my opinion, is coming out of COVID and assisting small businesses to get back on their feet and people to get back to a normal lifestyle and activities, facilitating school activities. Just getting a, getting the population back to a normal functioning and get the businesses supported and back on their feet. Because I know there are many people and businesses struggling. My neighbor just recently lost her job, and if she's not able to get another one, she'll be out of her house. So I know it's still a paramount issue. So I think that will be at the top of the list, I think, for Gardner. Planning and zoning and planning and zoning and planning and zoning. Because it's growing so fast. And I know there are many concerns. I took the liberty to interview citizens just to see what, to them, I felt their priorities were, what my priorities should be, should I be honored to be in this position? And then number one, two things came up routinely. Potholes, which you've already addressed, so that'll be good news, that I can share with them. And the second thing, which was their first item, was just that they're concerned that Gardner is gonna become a warehouse district. That the city will just disappear amongst all of this business and industry that's coming in. And so in terms of addressing those things, again, I think it goes back to zoning and planning. And my job as I, to, when I step into this position will be to learn what resources are available from the city, what tools I can use to facilitate educated and useful discussions on the topics and movement forward. And I think that would be the same with any of these, any of these different things.
Thank you very much. This is kinda, it sounds like this might be a, the same question, but that's, that's, that's all right. Identify three priorities of the city that might be different from issues. Priorities being just, you know, items that they would like to address.
Yeah, I, when I read that question, I read it the same as well. So I don't, I don't really see that the issues facing the city in the next three years, I think they are the priorities of the city. So I, I don't know that there's a different one. It's not, I don't have a, an awareness of it at this point in my journey.
Okay, great. And then the last one is, where do you see the city in five to 10 years?
Well, I think that depends largely on the council and how the city is managed and what direction the city chooses to take in terms of planning and zoning and saving the city from the industrial park appearance or, you know, lifestyle versus a, a community that saved the small town that we have and that everybody here loves. And I have spoken to some of the realtors who've said that people are actually taking their money out of the city because they're concerned about that. So that would be, to me, the biggest issue for the next five years, where the city will be really depends on the decisions that are made in the next several months to years.
Okay, great. I'm gonna open it up to members of the governing body if they wish to ask any follow-up questions. Yes, Council President?
Probably asked this of everyone, but if you are not chosen this evening, are you still interested in serving on other boards or other committees?
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much. You have a, you have a minute to make a closing statement. And please feel free to tell us why you'd be a great choice for council.
Well, whether it's me or someone else, I'm sure you'll pick a qualified candidate. I just would like to express my concern for anyone in leadership for the next few years, given the tumultuous environment that we're currently living in. And I just would hope that you would pick someone who's got a strong backbone and can take some of the slings and arrows that will be cast at them. Because I think it's gonna be a challenging time for leadership. But I would appreciate the opportunity, and if you see me as a viable candidate, I greatly appreciate it, and I would honor the opportunity to serve.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, Stacy.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Great. Next on the list is Casey Deaton. Coming forward. If you please state your name and address for the record, and also you can start your two-minute opening statement.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor, council members.
Be sure to speak into the microphone, too.
You can pull it down.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm short. Thank you guys for the opportunity. For those that don't know, my name is Casey Deaton, 533 North Wynwood. I became a citizen of Gardner in 2008, when I moved here from Overland Park, looking for a small-town, family-friendly vibe. I currently reside here with my 16-year-old son. He is a sophomore at Gardner Edgerton. About six to seven years ago, I started regularly attending council meetings. I wanted to learn more about our city and become more involved in our local government. In that time, I've gone through the Citizens Police Academy and Gardner U. I was a chairperson of the Citizens Police Advisory Committee, where I started the Positive Ticket Program. And I currently serve on the Planning Commission. I've also ver- I have also volunteered at various events all around town. In 2019, I decided to throw my hat in the ring, and I ran for city council. I came up 16 votes short. While campaigning, I had the privilege to talk to citizens about their wants and their needs in our community, as well as their concerns. I feel like engaging with our citizens in a professional manner is incredibly important. It was mentioned in the last meeting that an appointee might not feel like they're representing the people. I can tell you, as somebody who has campaigned, I would not feel that way. If appointed, I would represent, represent the citizens at the same level of commitment that I had promised, had I been elected. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's like 44.
I can keep talking, but.
Think a lot of brevity might be something that people would like to have seen in this sort of position. All right. First question, what are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years? And what steps need to be taken to address them?
So I see the three biggest issues facing Gardner is managing our growth, the impact that the logistics park is gonna have on our city, and then maintaining our existing roads and our infrastructure. As Gardner continues to grow rapidly, we need to ensure that the growth is sustainable without putting an additional financial burden on our residents through higher taxes and utility costs. We can manage that through entering fiscally responsible development agreements to ensure each project is financially sustainable in the short and long term. As the logistics park continues to grow, we need to work to mitigate the impact of the increasing commercial truck traffic through the city by identifying appropriate truck routes and move traffic into the interstate as efficiently as possible. And with our roads and our infrastructure, there are many areas where our roads and sidewalks require repair and replacement. As we add infrastructure to support our growth, we need to make sure that we are focused on maintaining what we already have. And we need to mitigate the financial burden of that on our individual citizens.
All right. Again, I'm gonna ask the second question, which, and it sounds like the first one, but sometimes priorities and issues are different things. Identify, please, if you could, three priorities of the city.
Yeah, so we need to ensure that we continue on a path of sustainable growth. And we need to support that growth so it doesn't create an undue burden on our citizens. We need to continue to annex land south and east of the city along I-35 to ensure that we secure our planning area and have additional room to grow over the next several decades. We need to keep our taxes and utility costs in check to make sure that we continue to be an affordable company or an affordable city for our citizens.
Okay, great. And the last one is, where do you see the city in five to 10 years?
Over the next five to 10 years, I'd like to see us having made a significant progress in developing on the east side of I-35 to provide additional housing, jobs, and entertainment for our community. I believe we'll see substantial population growth due to the availability of jobs and the lure of being away from a more densely populated metro area. I'd like to see us establishing a good road network that facilitates the movement of commercial truck traffic from the out, from inside the city to outside, make this a safer place to live and to work. I wanna see us being a, a city where more people want to live, where they can work, and where we have more availability for entertainment options.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any, any follow-up questions from any member of the governing body, for a case? Yes?
Because I know you're already on the planning commission, so I assume you would wanna continue if you were not chosen.
Of course, I would continue on the planning commission anywhere else I can volunteer.
Anyone else? Yes, someone?
What did you learn from running a campaign and coming up so close, but just outside?
Campaigning is hard work. But I learned that what we consider issues might not be what our citizens consider issues. And being engaged with our citizens and listening to what their concerns are, I find very important. I know that not every decision that a council member makes is gonna make you the most popular person. Sometimes tough decisions have to be made. But making them in a professional manner, speaking to citizens in a professional manner, explaining yourself, why did you vote a certain way? Letting them know, look, I'm looking out for a long-term for Gardner. And, you know, just making sure that staying engaged is incredibly important.
Anyone else? All right, you have one minute, Casey. You're on the clock, but since you've been early on all the other ones, I'm.
Sorry.
No, it's unknown. No, please don't apologize.
No, I just wanna thank you guys for the opportunity to interview this evening. We, you know, hearing about the issues, and everybody's gonna have different issues or maybe the same. I just wanna be part of the solution. I want to have an opportunity to, can you, to continue to serve our citizens. I, I wanna tackle every problem with professionalism. I wanna continue to engage our citizens and continue to serve in Gardner. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Casey. Appreciate your answers. Pen didn't work?
Well, they're good.
All right, next on the list is Adriana Mader. Good evening, Adriana, how you doing?
Good evening. I'm doing well. Adriana Mader, 32604 West 171st Court in Gardner. Thank you for the opportunity. A little bit about me, I also ran for election in 2019. It was an experience like no other. It really was eye-opening and yet affirming my decision to represent the citizens of Gardner. Some background on me, I moved here in 1998 from a little town in Central Kansas and then decided to hop around Johnson County a little bit. Ended up in Shawnee and Olathe and Edgerton, Spring Hill, and decided, you know what? I like Gardner. So planted my roots here in 2013 and have not left since. I have a daughter who is a sophomore at GEHS. So along with that comes a lot of opportunities for involvement. I've served on the Booster Club for GEHS. I've also served on the Site Council for Pioneer Ridge Middle School. I am a 40-year member of the American Legion Auxiliary. I have served on the Festival of the Trails, doing parking, that was kinda fun. But always liked to serve. I've also volunteered with the Meals on Wheels program. Currently serving on the Planning Commission. I have served in numerous roles as chairwoman, vice chair, and as a commissioner. I've also participated with the Downtown Corridor Project. That's a little bit about me for my opening two minutes.
Great, no, thank you very much, appreciate it. So you've got the same questions everybody else got. You've been through this drill before many, many times, so. What are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years, and what steps need to be taken to address them?
So the, the three biggest issues facing the city, just from my perspective, maintenance of the current infrastructure and continue to enhance the ADA capabilities. I think that's very important, because with, without a solid base in place, we can't deliver the services our residents are looking for and that they expect and that they pay for. I also think that a, a rebuilding of a good working partnership with Edgerton and USD 231 is gonna become very critical in the next coming three years and, and in the future. Even right now, I think that's a, a very important thing that needs to be addressed. And also affordable housing, I, this is starting to happen. Being on Planning Commission, I, I see the movement, so I think that's headed in the right direction, and that's definitely something I hear a lot. There's no place for me to live. I can't find anything. I want to buy, but I can't. There's just, the stock isn't there, but it's, it's growing, so I think that's moving in the right direction.
Thanks, Adriana. Please identify, and again, issues and priorities are different things, a little too often, but if you could please identify three priorities of the city going forward.
Sure. Again, I can't speak loudly on this, the current infrastructure. That's great to expand the boundaries, you know, we're growing, growing, growing. But if you don't have that core infrastructure in place, any, any growth is gonna break. So again, current infrastructure, that's gotta be a priority. I think focusing on attracting those small businesses and locally-owned employers is important. And the Downtown Corridor Project could serve as a vehicle for that. I think there's a lot of good elements within that plan that could be incorporated. And just a, a change of a mentality for respect within the leadership and roles within the, the council members. I think that's also a priority. It's a, it's one of those, I guess you'd call it maybe a soft skill priority, but I think that is something that needs to be focused on.
Okay. Where do you see the city in five to 10 years?
Sure, five to 10 years. I don't, I don't see there, there being much of a change from the size perspective. I think there's gonna be some growth, but I don't think it's gonna be this exponential growth. I see the city improving on the base that they have. So again, I see these infrastructure items being addressed, so I see that as a positive. In five to 10 years, we're gonna see the benefits of doing the maintenance and doing the upgrades. I see the city having a bright future. There's a lot of great plans laid out there. And if pieces can be pulled, it doesn't have to be all of it at once, obviously, we couldn't do that. But there's a lot of great plans and ideas that could be implemented to make the city better in five to 10 years.
Thank you, thank you, Adriana. Response, I'm gonna open this up now to follow-up questions from the governing body. So assuming you have yours, or Todd?
And again, you're on the planning commission as well, and I assume you'll, you would stay on if you were not elected.
Mark, I have two questions.
Okay.
Two.
One, I, I know that you said in your, you know, bio-information that you're available on Mondays, and so that's great. What I don't know is, I knew in the past that planning commission moving from Tuesday to Monday could be a problem for you. And this obviously is for the moment, you know, you didn't know that there's gonna be an appointment process happening, whereas you did know about election. Do you need a time window to be able to move into the seat, or are you able to do it now?
No, that, that's already been taken care of. It was, it's a side job I have, and I was able to, to do some adjusting and schedule changes, so that's no longer a problem.
The second question is, since you were on the Downtown Corridor Project and, you know, you're on Planning Commission, you see a lot of the projects, you know a lot of what's going on behind the scenes. We have yet to identify how to fund the Downtown Corridor Project. Do you have any suggestions?
I, probably the easiest one off the top of my head would be to look for a third-party investor to help fund. Along with, you know, there's, there are other opportunities to apply for grants and other miscellaneous, but immediately the first one that pops to my head is engage a third-party.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Any other person who has questions? Thank you, Adriana.
Yeah.
I'd just be happy to hear your closing statement.
Quick closing statement, thank you for the opportunity. I love to serve my city and will continue to do so in whatever capacity, involvement that I can, so thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Adriana.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor. Yes? They can't hear me?
Yeah.
That never happens. I gotta lean way, oh, yeah. I guess not. All right, so I will be sure to lean in, probably don't blow anybody's ears out here. Okay, I hope that's better. Next person on the list is George Rifford. Hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
You got it.
Excellent. Good evening, sir.
Greetings, guys, greetings. George Rifford, 28604 West 162nd Place, Gardner, Kansas.
And it might make any difference here, yeah.
I wouldn't sure if people were pulling him off, so.
And just be sure to, to, as I was just told, speak into the microphone.
Yeah. George Rifford, 28604 West 162nd Place, Gardner, Kansas. Greetings, and thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to interview for this open city council position. I bring to the table over, over 20 years of retail hardware sales and leadership experience with a diverse range of organizations such as Sears, Ace Hardware, LG, Sprint. And I'm currently head, head of sales and business development for, with Pink Light, which were a software virtualization company. I moved here in 2001 from Chicago. I am a Western Kansas boy from Haysville, so I spent about five years in Chicago. And then in late, late 90s, moved back here, and I've been here pretty much since then. Raised two girls here, they've graduated, and I decided, hey, they're out of the house, maybe it's time to do something for my community. I excel at building and cultivating relationships, which is able to successfully navigate complex negotiations and build trust between parties. I think, I believe that these soft skills will enable me to serve the city and its, the city council and the citizens of Gardner effectively and efficiently. Regarding the serving the citizens of Gardner, I would like to note that I'm a registered independent, and I have been so for several years. I believe strongly that partisan politics do not have a place in being an, an effective city servant, and I intend to serve all citizens of Gardner, regardless of any political affiliations with transparency and accountability. In preparation for this open city council opportunity, I have collaborated with and led several community action groups over the years, as well as coach kids throughout, my kids and other kids as well. And a lot of these community action groups over the years were formed to voice traffic and developments concerns here in Kansas, or in Gardner, pardon me. While some might find these exercises tedious, I enjoyed working with the city and others to find consensus and agreement for all the parties. and others to find consensus and agreement for all the parties involved. I do believe that these activities have provided me with the insight and experience to serve the citizens of Gardner effectively and efficiently over the next several years.
Thank you, George. Start with the questions. What are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years, and what steps are going to need to be taken to address them?
So I apologize if I'm going to sound like a repetitive record here, but I think they're all valid. I think we all have the same concerns, so I'm going to repeat some of the things that my esteemed colleagues brought up. Responsible growth and taxation, I believe, is the first one. I believe that the city needs to be flexible and able to pivot quickly if, when housing, retail, and workplace trends shift. As we know right now, retail is shifting, retail and workplaces are shifting online right now. A lot of people work from home, and I think as a city, we need to ensure that our master plan supports these changes. In addition, property tax abavings for new development, I believe, should be given proper due diligence before approvals. I think to accomplish this, I believe that future development proposals and decisions should have two second issue, better alignment with the city's master plan. One of the most recent community action groups I was on was regarding a development in regards to the master plan. And I believe that new citizens, as well as our current citizens, want to make sure that we have a master plan that works for them, and we also have development that works for them. I mentioned it later, but I'll mention it now. I love the Waverly Place development over here on the other side of town. I think that's great. I think it does a great job, or it's going to do a great job, of bringing neighborhoods together. I think that's the kind of development we should have, bringing the communities together. Finally, the third biggest issue I think that Gardner's facing is, I think, kind of an identity crisis here. I don't know for sure if we know who we are. Having lived here in Gardner for several years, I think that the city of Gardner is facing this. We're not Olathe, or we're not Edgerton, but we are somewhere in between. No pun intended. New housing growth is great, but sometimes this requires additional retail and commercial growth to meet the needs of all these citizens. I agree with multifamily housing as well. Like I said, the Waverly Place is great. I think that's, we need affordable housing. We need that type of development, as well as single-family housing as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that it's just imperative that the city consider a more unique approach to city planning that makes our community stand out in Johnson County and the metro.
Okay, great. Thank you.
There.
Yeah, we have the two-minute timeline.
Did I get two? I apologize.
That's all right. Please, if you could identify three priorities of the city.
Sure, absolutely. I'm going to define this as what I call intermodal creep. I think it's been brought up again in the past. I think it's important for the city to maintain a good relationship with our neighbor to the west, and I do believe that we need to have a plan for what is happening to the south and to the west of our city to make sure we are protecting our interests here within Gardner as the intermodal continues to surround our city to the south. Another priority, I think, is, as I mentioned before, the master plan definition. I believe that the current master plan that the city has adopted is good, but I think it should be reviewed periodically and redefined if necessary to better identify housing and any retail trends that citizens of Gardner want and need. Finally, the last one, I think, as mentioned by my esteemed colleagues, infrastructure. As I continue to watch the intermodal warehouses pop up, prudent suggests that the city should not only protect our current infrastructure, roads and everything, but also plan accordingly as the growth to the west and south continues. Brought up the Highway fifty-six improvement, which is great. I knew that was coming. I wasn't sure where that was at. But I know that the Gardner Road Interchange is coming up as well, and I think that that's slated for the near future. I personally would like to make sure that we are working together with other city and county and state entities to ensure that these suggested improvements are in alignment with the city of Gardner's future growth plans.
Okay, great. Thank you. Where do you see the city, hold on, your visionary hat here.
So.
Where do you see the city in five to ten years?
Sure. I believe that the city of Gardner can be a beacon for other communities to measure to if the city takes a strong look at current and future housing, retail, and commercial development trends. In addition, while some consider walkable communities to be cliche and kind of, you know, pass their time, I believe that multifamily housing like the Waverly Point Place on the west side of town and single-family housing can coexist if planned and developed correctly, and they can also become a continuous walkable community. We are seeing this in another larger Johnson County suburb presently. We all know growth is inevitable. Not sure what rate or how much it's going to grow over the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. But if we plan it correctly, and it's something my father said to me, "Measure twice, cut once", I do believe that the city, which is already great, can be a leading city within Johnson County and the metro.
Great. Thank you, George. Any follow-up questions from any member of the governing body? I know you've got yours.
Sure, yeah. If you're not picked this evening, are you interested in other boards and other committees?
Actually, I'm on the Economic Development Advisor Committee. We're just starting our meeting here soon, I believe, so, yeah. And yeah, absolutely. I am.
And how long have you been on that committee?
Just started. I don't think, we haven't had our first meeting yet, so it's coming up here within the week.
Anybody else? All right, well, you have a minute for your, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Definitely.
Yes, yes.
What do you like so much about the Waverly?
Could you please?
What do you like so much about the Waverly Plaza development?
I like the way it has the potential to bring communities together. Not only you've got the condos to the east, I believe it is, and then you have the neighborhood to the west across Waverly. Then you're also building a retail, mixed retail environment, and I like the way that that has. For example, if I live over there in the housing development to the west, hey, man, if there's a pizza place or dry cleaners or whatever is going to go in there, I'm going to stop right in there, and I'm going to meet people from that neighborhood. Same from the condos. I think it's great. It brings communities together, and I think that's the key. Sure.
Good question. Anything else? Okay. You have a minute for your closing statement. Just give us your sales pitch.
All right. Again, thank you all for allowing me to interview for the open city council opportunity, and I hope I've answered your questions with efficacy. I do believe that my background and experience will lend me well to hit the ground running with this opportunity and serve the citizens of Gardner, as well as provide a different perspective to the city and the council with my retail background and development background, excuse me. As I mentioned in my open statement, I intend to serve this council and the citizens of Gardner with transparency and accountability, and I look forward to the opportunity to do so.
Great. Thank you very much, George. Thank you for putting yourself out there, and good luck.
All right, thank you.
The next individual to be interviewed is Chris Roberts. Good evening, Mr. Roberts. How are you doing this evening?
Not too bad. Not too bad.
Great. State your name and address for the record. You're going to do your two-minute opening statement.
Sure thing. Chris Roberts, one-six-zero-West Shawnee Street. Can I take this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was sounding really weird.
Probably want to try to raise that microphone a little bit, too. These are real close mics to.
Is that better?
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
All right. Chris Roberts, one-six-zero-West Shawnee Street. First, I wanted to thank you guys for having an open and fair, you know, opportunity to do this, not just for myself, for everybody else. And I also wanted to thank Rich, even though he's not here tonight, for the service that he did provide, even though it was a short-term thing. Anyway, so my name's Chris. I'm happily married for eighteen years, father of five. And yes, the next question is, how old are they? Seventeen, fifteen, thirteen, four, and one? So had a little bit of a gap there. Me and my wife, like I said, have been married for eighteen years, so we've been together since we were seventeen. We made the decision to call Gardner home back in 2015, and it was based on several things, okay? The first one being the strong support of community, which we all got to see firsthand during this pandemic with the care for the elderly and the care for the children. I mean, from birthday parades to donation of groceries, donation of time, you know, just sitting down and talking with people. You know, this was something that I feel our town strived with. We also moved here for the great schools and the children, or for our children, sorry. We were super excited. Gardner's always had like blue-ribbon schools, and we lived shortly in Green Valley over on the Missouri side. And it's hilarious how much Green Valley and Gardner are like similar, just that small-town feel. But, you know, the schools are out of this world. And while it's been a little bit hard with the pandemic going on and things like that, they just recently re-initiated the hybrid, and we're hoping that everything kind of gets back to normal there. But our kids love the academics, they love the sports, band, orchestra. They've all met friends here. They've all decided they want to grow up here, so that's where we're at. I feel I bring a strong family-centered opinion to this council, obviously, with five kids. We have some work to do to make sure that we keep Gardner the way we love it, and this kind of lends to what everybody else was talking about. You know, I'm not saying don't grow, but we want to make sure we keep that charm of Gardner and why we all love it here, so.
Great. And right at two minutes. Wow, that's awesome. Candidate questions. Okay, I'll ask you the same three questions. What are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years, and what steps need to be taken to address them?
It's going to be like a broken record for the fourth time, let you guys know. So me, real simple, road conditions. Now, I will give you a little bit of background about me. I do work over with Allstate. I am a salesman. And so when we talk about making sure we want projects done, I'm not going to give up at the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, et cetera, et cetera, call. You need to make sure it gets done. So while I do appreciate that you guys voted on to get that process going tonight, we need to make sure we get it done because I've already paid for two alignments in the last five years. I don't want to pay for anymore. We also look at the potential concept of getting a bridge over Moonlight. And I don't know if you guys have talked about that or heard about that before, instead of having the tracks right there. I remember just this last year, we had a horrific accident there, and I feel like that railroad crossing tends to cut the whole town off from itself. So, and it happened several times throughout the day, especially with the intermodal just down the way. We need to look at the new businesses that are coming in. You know, Gardner's a perfect location for new and upcoming and wanting to grow businesses, but we need to make sure that they're going to be sustainable. I know there's already projects designed for the Price Chopper building, but I mean, we have open retail on our main street, and it just doesn't sit right. You know what I mean? And then, again, not losing the reason that we love Gardner. It's got that small-town appeal. So whether that's, you know, making sure that we grow, again, with the single apartment duplex-style housing, and making sure that the neighbors that we bring in are ones that share our values and not just here to go work at the warehouses.
All right. Thank you very much. Could you please identify, again, priorities and issues different? But could you please identify three priorities that the city should focus on?
So for me, I mean, the priorities are simple. Road conditions are one. I mean, obviously, again, you know, two alignments in five years. We need to work on the truck infrastructure, making sure that there's either signage that's, you know, telling them where they need to go, you know, don't go down Main Street. While it's fine for our businesses that are here, you know, the restaurants and the gas stations and Price Chopper, we need to make sure that any excess truck traffic is staying out of our little main area. And then ensuring the safe and fair enforcement of city standards and continuing to expand community events. There was a moment on Facebook, unfortunately, in the Gardner Citizen page, where somebody had called on somebody in this last year during the pandemic because they replaced their fence, and they were mad that their neighbor didn't replace their fence. And while I understand that the city does have to enforce codes and regulations and stuff like that, I think there does need to be a little leeway based on situation, based on what's going on, and whether that's the neighbor just needs to be nicer, you know, can't change everybody. And then, you know, more involvement, or more events and involvement in the community, I feel like would make everybody more, feel like they're more invited, more part of it. And I know, again, pandemic's changed a bunch of stuff this last year. I feel like we're kind of coming out of it now, getting to that point where we can all, you know, get the parades going again, things like that. But making sure that we're making it an inviting place for people to want to come.
Great. Thank you very much. Put your visionary hat on. Where do you see our city in five to ten years?
So in the last ten years, Gardner's grown from nine thousand to twenty-two thousand people. That's quite a big growth, and in the next ten years, I see it doubling again. So, I mean, simple math, yeah, but at the same time, you know, if we maintain our current trajectory and make sure that, you know, some of the suggestions that I and my fellow members have laid out, that they're evaluated and accepted, I feel like we'll still keep that small-town feel without losing it and make it a place where people want to raise their families, not just a place where people want to come to work.
Great. Thank you. Follow-up questions from members of the governing body? Anybody? Todd?
Sure. As a matter of fact, I do. Again, if not chosen this evening, are you interested in other committees, other boards, other commissions?
Yeah, I would be, yeah.
Mark, you mentioned a bridge over Moonlight and how those railroad tracks separate the city on one side or the other. As we grow across I-35, how do you think we could keep that barrier of the interstate from segregating?
So you're talking specifically where, like, just like making it to where that that's constantly open for people to get across back and forth?
No, what I mean is, as we grow on the south side of I-35, it's going to be another big barrier, right? Kind of like the railroad tracks are on Moonlight. So how are we going to keep the north side, south side, or east side, west side, however you want to phrase it, together?
That's a great question. I mean, just access is the easiest way, of course. I mean, the whole point of the bridge was, one, to make it safer, two, to make it to where everybody that's in, you know, the schools over there and the duplexes and housing that's over there are able to come across without, you know, with the only inconvenience being the stop sign instead of the two trains that just happen to be passing when they wanted to get through, so. Could add on more access right off of the highway over by Walmart? Extend that road that goes right by everything, maybe extend that down, give another entrance into the housing that's going to be built over in that area, so.
All right, great. Thank you very much. All right, you have a minute for a closing statement. Closing deal for the salesperson.
So I was taught long ago, two days ago, an old saying that my friend had. His grandpa told him whenever he's giving him a speech, you're going to tell him who you are. You're going to tell him what you're going to tell him, then you're going to tell him, then you're going to tell him what you told him. So, again, you know, I see the three biggest things that we need to work on. I feel like those issues, being a citizen of Gardner, being someone who works here, raises a family here, are going to be the main ones that you run into. I have a lot of ideas that if you guys want, you know, even if it's not something that we end up working out here, if you guys want to reach out, kind of go over some stuff, more than welcome to. That's pretty much it.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Chris. Thank you for your answers, and regardless of what happens, please stay involved.
Sure thing.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Hey, last person to come before the inquisition is, it's a friendly inquisition, though, so. Is John Tramble, Jr. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. John Tramble, Jr., one-eight-three-nine-zero, Canton Street. I come to you as a novice politician. I know nothing about politics, but what I bring, I'm a United States Air Force veteran, six and a half years, air traffic controller for over twenty-four years. I was also an air traffic controller in the Air Force. With being an air traffic controller in the FAA, I was elected union president, so imagine negotiating between management and some hard-driving men and women who's got ideals of their own. I moved here in 2014. The reason I'm here is because I am a pit bull advocate, and my pit bull, Charlie, needed a place to stay, and my then-girlfriend slash fiancee said, hey, I found us a house to rent. I was like, great baby, where? She says Gardner, Kansas. I said, where the? It's Gardner, Kansas. So she told me, and we've been here, and I've loved it ever since. With that said, how much time I got? Okay, fifty-four seconds. I want to serve. That's what I've always done. And like I said, I don't know much about politics, but I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to find mentors in this group to help me learn what needs to be learned. I think Gardner's a great community. I'm also a Realtor, so I'm constantly moving people in and out of the area. And people ask about Gardner. I tell them what a great place it is to live, and we'll address that later, but no housing here. But I love Gardner, and I think it's on a growth path. So that's me.
Thank you, John. All right, we'll start with the three questions we've been.
Okay, I will basically repeat everything they said.
Well, bring your spin.
I'm going to add a couple of things.
What three biggest issues that you feel are facing the city in the next three years, and what steps need to be taken?
Well, right now, the immediate thing is COVID. There have been job losses. There, of course, a lot of life loss. But during this, we've also seen the need for the community to come together to help those who are struggling. Not just, COVID just magnified it. So we, as a city, we as a community, need to figure out how to help those who are less fortunate. Infrastructure, of course, was brought up numerous times. I haven't had to have my car realigned yet, thank God, but as a citizen, we see that all the time, the big potholes, things like that. But, um, as a citizen, we see that all the time, the big potholes, um, things like that. Because of the losses of business, because of COVID, we need to figure out how to replace that revenue. That is one area that I think we can all address somehow, some way. We also need to, uh, figure about, about economic growth and how we can, uh, address that with the expansion south and west of 35 and what businesses that can bring with the new residential areas. And, um, communication, uh, is a big issue. Uh, I had to search, I made a couple of phone calls with the weather, are we still meeting? Rolling blackouts, are we still meeting, things like that. I heard about the Gardner newspaper when I first moved here. Uh, I don't know why we don't have that anymore, why we don't put things in that anymore. But I know the Facebook page has been a source of communication, but that shouldn't be it. The communication should come from the board, us. So that's, that's, uh, what I think are the issues.
Okay, great, thank you, John. Um, let's go on ahead and move on to the next one. Again, priorities and issues are different things. Um, I'd like to hear what you feel are the three priorities of the city, uh, overall.
Three priorities of the city, I'm gonna change it up a little bit. I think diversity is going to be a priority. Like I said, I'm a Realtor, and I help people move in and out of this place. And, um, I have to let people know that Gardner is a diverse city. It is, uh, opening, has open arms for people to come. And yes, we wanna keep that small-town feel, but we also need to face reality and know that the city's gonna grow. And with that, diversity i- is coming to town, and we need to address that. Uh, that's one of the priorities. Uh, infrastructure, uh, of course, is one, but we're addressing that slowly, and I don't know the ins and outs of the planning committee, but, you know, I know it's, it's happening. And that's pretty much it. We need decent wifi, decent internet. So we need, uh, fiber in, in the city. So I decided to change it up a little bit.
Hallelujah. Yeah, yeah. I like that. Okay. Um, where do you see, again, visionary here, and you've been Realtor?
Yes.
So you've seen a lot of movement of people into and some out of the community, unfortunately. But, uh, where do you see our city in the next five to 10 years, uh, things work out?
I do see the city growing. Uh, I don't know by how much. I do see diverse cultures moving into town. I see, uh, with that culture, different businesses, different restaurants, if you will. Just opportunities for people to build wealth for their family, that's what I see.
Great, thank you. Um, follow-up questions for, uh, Mr. Tramble. Um, I will start with, uh, our council president.
If you are not chosen this evening, are, are you interested in serving either way, to the boards or the commissions?
Well, one thing I didn't mention, I'm also a member of the Gardner Rotary, and we're doing things. Uh, build a bed, projects with Sleep and Happily Peace, also a member of the American Legion. So I would have to see what my time looks like. Because I'm really involved in, in those two, so.
Anyone else? Yes, Randy?
Uh, John, thank you and everybody else that came up, uh, and spoke tonight. Uh, I appreciate everybody's interest in serving, uh, the community at large through this appointed opportunity. Uh, John, you hit on one item that nobody else has, and that's diversity. We've seen examples of that throughout our community at different levels, uh, through different examples of adversity. What, um, what type of diversity are you talking about? So you spoke about, you know, businesses based on diversity, maybe different restaurants, et cetera. But do you have something more specific that you're interested in changing or affecting or?
Gardner has, if you will, a reputation of being, anytime you hear small-town feel, that's what I call for white token. Alright, just be blunt, okay? So with the affordability of Gardner, with the openness of, hey, look, come to our town. We wanna have you, we wanna experience what you experience. Being a member of Rotary and having exchange students come to town, just the fact that they're like, oh, I'm in America, but the things they're offering to their host families has been amazing. You know, so when I say diversity, I mean, being welcome to different opinions, different ideas, and different cultural identities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Um, anybody else? Alright, I will move on then to your closing statement, one minute, seal the deal.
Okay. Um, like I mentioned, I don't have the political chops, right? But I am a learner. In fact, uh, if anything, being taught how not to run two planes together should mean something. But with that said, uh, I, I love Gardner, I do. Uh, my wife and I had, had thought about moving to help my mother-in-law, but, uh, we wanna find someplace here. Mother-in-law signed a picture, but, but, uh, I love Gardner, I love the friends I've made. Because I'm a transplant, uh, I mean, I was born and raised in Kansas, but I left when I joined the Air Force, worrying never to come back, and then life happened. God laughed. So Gardner's gonna be my home, and I wanna, I wanna see it grow. I want to see it welcoming to other, uh, races, cultures, and everything, uh, because it's a great place to live, it really is. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much, John. And, uh, I hope you'll stay involved in the civic side of things. I know you've been involved very heavily in public service here in the town with, with Rotary, so. I know you care very deeply about our community, so, thank you very much. Alright. The next part of the process is going to be a, uh, a ranking of the applicants. Uh, this will be done, uh, there's a pa, there's a, a piece of paper here that shows ranks one through six. Please, uh, place your ranking on that, on that, and then, uh, I'm assuming that we will just pass them down to, uh,
Sharon.
You'll go, you'll come around, get them Sharon? Okay, great. And then, uh, and then Sharon will do the tally, she will send it to the city attorney, and the city attorney will deliver it to me to be read, and I will only read the top three. Uh, if there's a consensus, as I said, uh, three out of, uh, five for a single candidate, that individual will be brought forward for a vote. So, thank you very much, and, uh, we'll start the voting. We'll, uh, take a two-minute break. If anyone on the scene needs to go to the restroom. Two minutes, that's good, yeah. We got a very, very good city clerk who is lightning-fast at tallying, so. Okay, we're, uh, finishing up the tally, but there was a question for clarification, and that is about, uh, the selection of a vice president of, of the council to replace Rich Melton, who obviously is no longer on the council. What we're going to do is if there's a consensus and we have a, a vote, uh, we will immediately swear the person in. And then after that, we will go through the rest of the regular business, but we will not choose a vice president of the council this meeting. It will be the first item of action at the next council meeting, which will be the first of March. So, um, just, uh, letting everybody know, uh, in this room as well as online, that that will not be done this evening, so. See, Sharon did it without a calculator. Oh, no, you did? Dang it!
We sent the numbers guy home. I'm hoping Amy has a spreadsheet.
I can make one.
Alright, sir, I'm making. Your math better be right. Okay, according to the rankings that I see here, um, there is a, there is a consensus applicant chosen in the first, in the first round of balloting. So, uh, Casey Deaton received, uh, the number one selection from three members of the governing body. And, uh, so, uh, she is, uh, provisionally, um, appointed, pending approval by the governing body. So, um, uh, just in terms of the total rankings, um, Deaton was first with 12, John Tramble was second with 13, uh, Stacy Cooper and Adriana Metter tied for third to 17th. So, uh, that is the ranking. So, uh, um, I will entertain a motion on the appointment of, or the approval of Casey Deaton as, to fill the seat of the departed Rich Melton for the city council. So moved?
Second.
Motion Baldwin second winters that we appoint Casey Deaton to the Gardner City Council. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Alright, extension, so do we have a four, a three, yeah, a three-one, no, yeah, three-one approval for, um, Casey?
Did you vote?
Well, I didn't, I did not vote, so I have a say.
Did you say?
Correct. Alright.
Three-one-one.
Three-one-one, yes, sorry. Alright, um, Casey Deaton, congratulations, welcome to the Gardner City Council.
Thank you.
If you wish, you could come forward and, uh, we'll go ahead and introduce her to the official office.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Casey Deaton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As council member for the city of Gardner, Kansas.
As council member for the city of Gardner, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome, congratulations, Casey. She will sit in this seat, um, obviously, there'll be some shuffling at the beginning of the next meeting, but yes. And, uh, one thing I do want to, uh, say to all members who apply, thank you for your time, thank you for your, uh, attention, thank you for your commitment to coming out this evening in this kind of weather to, to, uh, put yourself out there in front of the community. I very strongly encourage all of you, um, this is, this is not a, a very easy selection process, but we want you to be involved, we want you to continue to be a part of our, of our community. I think we speak for, I speak for everybody on this dais in gratitude, and thank you for your ideas. I've taken several here that I think are going to be, uh, pulled forward over the next several years. And hopefully, I mean, there is an election coming up in the fall, uh, there may be an opportunity to run for office and, uh, and assume a seat on the dais through candidacy. So thank you very much for your time, uh, and, uh, and good luck and, and stay involved. We need people like you out here to continue to work with the city and work on behalf of the city, so, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, council updates. Start with, uh, staff update for council. Uh, I will start on my right side, your left, with, uh, Chief Engineer, uh, Tim Appledani.
I have nothing for me.
Nothing for you, okay, uh, this is Economic Development, Mr. Knoppick.
Just, uh, two items. We do have the Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting coming up within the next, oh, seven business days. I did get an email out to everybody, I'm trying to select a date based on what I heard back from them, but we will be meeting either late this week or early next week. On Monday, we do have a planning commission meeting, um, we have a couple items on that agenda as well. Short of that, I have nothing else.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Parks and Rec, Jason Bruce.
No, sir, nothing tonight.
Gons Garcia, Utilities, oh, yes, you have some updates for us.
Over the weekend, we, uh, were talking with K-M-G-A. Uh, they told us that due to the, uh, prolonged cold weather affecting, uh, mid, the Midwest all the way to south of, uh, Texas, uh, there's production problems and transportation problems with natural gas.